This is the January 20, 2022, meeting of the Rockport Planning Board. All members are present at this meeting. And as we on our agenda.
Uh oh.
Oh.
Is Jason frozen?
You're not frozen.
Frozen on my screen. Tom looks frozen too. Are you? No, he's not. Tom's not frozen.
He's not even in his home. He's in the office, isn't he?
Yeah, he's in the office.
Oh, Kelsey. Kelsey, have they been having troubles with the feed in town offices?
No.
I was there earlier.
Mine, yeah.
An article in the paper today that Gloucesters Town Hall's got bad internet.
Issues? Don't mind me, folks. I'm having a late dinner tonight.
You there, Jason?
Yeah.
Oops.
I just finished my wife's birthday dinner and then after this, we'll have her birthday cake, so.
You sharing?
Yeah, I was gonna say, what time?
There he is.
Okay, you're back.
Oh, still muted and frozen.
I think Kelsey has to let him in.
He's still, oh, there he is. Now he's, okay, said.
He's bigger.
Looks like it's snowing at Tom's house.
He's in the shower.
It's my green shower. I do greenwashing. Can we edit this part out of the meeting recording?
See Jason, but I see that he's muted.
Well, I think he was frozen again.
Still having problems coming in.
Yeah.
I wonder what he's thinking or saying at the moment.
I don't know that we want to hear it.
No, nope.
Well. I'm hesitant to take over the meeting as vice chair because Jason would miss it.
Let me, let me give him a call.
He's back. You see him down there?
Maybe he can join by phone.
Oh, good idea.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna give him a call. I'm gonna go up. I'm gonna go.
Joining again.
Back.
I'm back.
Wow.
I don't know what happened. Um, so I guess where we left off was for any members of the public who wanted to make a comment.
That was seamless, Jason. That was seamless.
Kelsey, can you hear me?
Kelsey.
Toby has his hand up.
I don't see any. Toby's sending you up.
Someone have their hand up?
Toby.
Thank you. Toby, I sent in 95 Granite Street. Aren't we all delighted with Zoom? I wrote a letter to the Board of Selectmen on January 10th stamped in. Pardon? I wrote a letter to the Board of Selectmen on January 10th. It's stamped in the same date. I copied your board on that letter. I don't know whether you read it or not. I'd like to read it. Select Board of Selectmen, ladies and gentlemen, I write to you to express my concerns about your plan to displace the Rockport Affordable Housing Trust Fund from the code of bylaws and replace it with a private not-for-profit trust not in the bylaws. When you last discussed this, perhaps a month ago, I asked you to research the alternatives before taking such actions. Look before you leap. There are two obvious alternatives, both preferable to your proposed trust. The first, spelled out in chapter seven, section E of the bylaws, is the currently inoperative but legally existing Affordable Housing Trust Fund. This was not dreamed up by former town administrator Linda Sanders. She took the form out of state law and tweaked it. She made two minor alterations at my request. How much more she altered the state's version, I do not know. In public comment period, I asked you to find out which other cities and towns have implemented the state's model and find out how this has worked out for them. I repeat my request that you get this information and make it available to the government and bylaw committee and to the public. The second alternative, which I again request that you investigate, is the use of one or more existing private affordable housing trusts to undertake the town's endeavors. Why reinvent the wheel when there are working models ready to hand? You need to find out if Action Incorporated, Harbor Like Community Partners, or Habitat for Humanity would be willing to undertake the town's affordable housing ventures and, if so, on what terms. It would be rash and grossly irresponsible to attempt to foist a new, hence untried, affordable housing venture on the voters without properly researching the possible alternatives. And, by the way, where do we stand with the housing needs assessment? Thank you for your attention to these matters. I got no response from the Board of Selectmen. I'm regularly ignored, but the questions don't go away and the problem is there.
Thank you for hearing that with us. Anybody else? Okay, we'll go to the next item on the agenda, which is approval of the November 18, 2021 minutes. Anybody have any additions, corrections, or changes to those minutes?
I have three small things.
Three small things, okay.
Three small things. So up in the title block where it says November 18, there's no space between November and 18.
Okay.
That sounds trivial, but if somebody does a word search, a string search for number space 18, they won't find this.
Well, mine, mine has a space. That's interesting.
I'm looking at the Word document.
Just looking at the printed out version of it and.
No, there's no space in the Word document.
Okay, well. I'll ask Mary about that.
And then down under member items, let's see, line 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7. Attend in the Housing Choice Meeting and concern the board members an ebook file. Well, ebook is not the right word. It's an electronic file. We don't want to look like people who don't know what ebook is.
All right.
And then in that same paragraph, the third line from the bottom says, getting an updated report for town. And we talk, I was talking about a precipitation report. Or precipitation data. And I think that's what we should have here rather than making it look like we're looking for a report about storms or flooding. I think it's, it's the precipitation data that was needing update.
Okay, so. It says, Mika states that the Conservation Commission met and is concerned with stormwater and getting an updated. What?
Just a precipitation report. Insert the word precipitation between updated and report. That would be fine. I believe I said that in the meeting. If not, it was silent and understood.
And was the town stay in there? Precipitation report for the town?
Well, that would apply to the town. Yeah, I don't know if they have a specific one. I think it's kind of regional.
You know, in terms of. What was said is that, would that be accurate to?
Strike the words for town because that's unnecessary.
All right.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah. Can we spell my, my name right?
I saw that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then the only, the only other thing I wanted to bring up was number one, public comment period, Larry Friedman, the third line. Uh, the sentence states he is wary of 53 lots. Is that what he said? 53 lots? Or is he just referring to the area around the MBTA station?
I don't remember.
I don't remember either.
I think he was talking about five granite.
Five granite? Oh, Harbor, he ran a street crossing.
Yeah.
Maybe it's the units.
Well.
It has.
Wary of blank lots being developed next to the MBA station. So I'm assuming he's referring to, you know, the zoning, potential zoning change.
Right, right.
And then he refers to Gloucester Crossing, which has quite a few more units than.
Right.
Than what would be in Rockport and. Yeah, so I'm just gonna leave it unless, because I don't know what he said. He may have said.
To me, 53 is kind of a specific number. I don't remember that part. I thought it was just a general point on the area.
Yeah, just crossing out 53 would still make sense.
Yeah, just lots.
Just lots being developed.
Leave the number, the number is immaterial.
It would be lots of lots.
Yeah.
Anything else, Harry?
That's it for me.
Okay. I have one. Change. It's obviously not correct. It's in the first full paragraph on the, well, the big paragraph on the second page, about halfway down, middle of the, of the line, it says Shaw shares the proposed zoning, it should be zoning map. I don't know where downtown district map.
It'd be shit. Just insert zoning district.
Yeah, zoning map is fine. You know, the map of the entire town wasn't downtown. So that's all, all I have. Anybody else? If nobody else has any changes, then we need a motion to approve the November 18, 2021 minutes.
Motion to accept those minutes as amended.
Okay, motion by.
Second.
Seconded by Tom. Okay. And all in favor?
Hi.
A call vote. Peter?
Hi.
Denise?
Hi.
Harry?
All right.
And I'll vote in favor too. That's five zero. Okay. Approved with amendments. Okay, the next item is. This is general, I mean, I just put it down here because this is obviously the big thing that's going to be happening next week, which are the two public hearings on Wednesday and on Thursday. Just to report. I have Denise, who has some really good PowerPoint skills this afternoon, this morning, and kind of used very loosely the Gloucester Planning Commission model. Get a PowerPoint. It was pretty good. So we did a draft PowerPoint. Sure, very short. And we're sending it to Chris Kuschel to use for, you know, his, I don't know what he was gonna do. He hadn't started on it yet, but he could use this as the basis for his own. You know, the idea here isn't to do like a 45-minute PowerPoint. This is a public hearing. So we're, we're gonna just use it to hit some, basically using the public public ring notices kind of the basis to hit on the various areas of change in both the general zoning and also the the new, the new provisions. And it's very, you know, it's very straightforward. You know, that's, we don't know what, you know, we don't know how the meeting's gonna go. We don't know how many people are gonna attend. But I can say, as of today, there has been exactly one person who has come in either to the planning board or the town clerk's office to look at the zoning amendments. One person. Pretty incredible. You know, so I don't know how many people who are coming to the public hearing. And I don't know how many of those people are gonna be, of course, they can also go online, so I shouldn't say that. They can view these online, although I think that would be difficult for someone who's unfamiliar with them, but they could do that. You know, it, there may be a lot of uninformed people coming to the public hearing. Just be advised.
Jason, question. That one person that, I don't know if you know who that is, that one person that's come in, is that the same person that may have been writing articles in the Gloucester Daily Times in the last week?
I don't think so. No. I don't think so. That person doesn't know what's going on, obviously, because the way they talked about the ADUs, they didn't understand that we have very strict limiting factors in that bylaw for use for short-term rentals. You know, and that's, that's a key component. So that, I mean, I hope. I'm just preaching to the choir here, but I hope that people will be, will be more educated, will be educated at the time of the public hearing, at least to a limited degree, just so we're not starting from scratch.
I, I think we should assume that we will be starting from scratch and that they're going to be attending the public hearing in order to become educated.
I, I think you're right, Denise.
Yeah.
It's a lot, it's a lot for, a lot of education and yeah, that, I mean, technically, the pub, a public hearing is for the members of the public to make comments and say, well, this, we don't like this, and what about this? But if you're coming to a public hearing and intending to be educated, it's gonna be tough to do that. Because you're trying to find things out. So you're right. I mean, I think a lot of people will do that. That's okay.
Yep.
That's okay. That's all I have, really. Got everything published. All that was a big push. Got all the public notices in the paper. Got the posted public notice, got it on the website. And all that was done, thanks with the big help of Debbie Power. She did a good job of getting this stuff on the website. And I think we've complied with all the legal requirements for posting, you know, a notice of public hearing, which is good.
Jason?
Yeah.
I had sent you a minor edit like 10 days ago, and you said to bring it up either tonight or at the public hearing. Could I bring it up tonight?
Yeah, you know, you can bring it up anytime, Tom. I mean, I think, why don't you tell people what you're thinking now and let them, because no one's familiar with it, rather than, you know, bringing it up. Just say, look, I'm thinking about suggesting a change to this particular sentence, and this is why, and take a look at it, because I can guarantee you, nobody else has looked at it. So why don't you, why don't you tell everyone what you're thinking about?
Okay, it's in Roman 9, so that's section IX, nine, E3. We had changed the, the reach of the, reach of the high tide, I think it said.
Well, first of all, let's back up, let's back up a little. This is, this is concerning the coastal construction and the coastal.
Right.
Own is that, that's right.
Right, right. And it used to be referencing the, the high water reach, I think. And I think if that was interpreted the way it was, the high water typically is on the rocks around here. And if you could be just landward of that, you could be on the rocks, up on stilts. And I don't think that's what we'd like to see. So I had suggested, and they made the change, so instead of high water line or whatever it was, they changed it to the coastal bank, because that's typically where the water washes up to.
Okay, what is that? Why don't you tell everybody what that means?
Well, the coastal bank is where the slope from the ocean side reaches a breakpoint and levels out. So that's kind of the definition of land rather than coast.
What, what's the upshot of your proposed amendment, Tom? I'm, I'm not following that.
It's already been amended to say that we use coastal banks instead of the high watermark.
Okay.
But it, it had a residual bit of description that says landward of the reach of. And it really, the coastal bank doesn't have any reach. The water had reach, but the coastal bank doesn't have reach. So I just wanted to delete the land, the, the reach of and make coastal bank plural, so it reads better. That's a simple change. It's just.
What would it say with your, with your proposed change?
I would change landward of the reach of the coastal bank to landward of coastal banks.
Okay, so you, so again, go, go back if you could, Tom, for my purpose, for my sake at least. Coastal bank.
Coastal bank is where the, the, the surface of the ground coming up from the water changes slope. There's some strict definition that they use in, in the Wetland Protection Act. And so that's all well-defined for Conservation Commission work and so on. So we would be consistent with their terminology. I don't know that it needs to be in our definitions, since it's already a concept there.
Where it changes slope, meaning it comes up from the water, it's, it's under, it's under the water, right?
Well, it starts out underwater and then.
Underwater, it goes up toward land, but it's already sloping going up toward the land, right?
Yeah, and then there's a breakpoint where it changes slope. That's my understanding of it.
There is a, there is a under the Wetlands Protection Act, it is a defined term.
Yeah.
And what I'm seeing is the seaward face or side of any elevated landform other than a coastal dune, which lies at the landward edge of a coastal beach, land subject to tidal action or other wetlands.
That's a definite what?
A coastal bank.
Okay, why wouldn't we want to use the same definition?
I think what Tom is saying is we don't need to include a definition because it's already a defined term.
Yeah, maybe this is a little too.
Maybe you guys can.
Skier.
I mean.
I have a question.
Oh, go ahead.
Denise, when you say it's a divide, defined term, where is it defined? Is it defined in the DEP regs?
It's defined under Massachusetts Statute 310, Regulation 10 dot 30.
Okay, all right.
So what if we just reference that in the?
Sure, as defined under Massachusetts, Regul, 310 Massachusetts Regulation 10 dot 30.
That's preferred because if there's ever any change there, then we don't have to change it at our end. It flows along with.
Right. I think, I think what, what Tom was saying is he just wants to make a, a, a small change to leave out a few words of a section that's already been amended.
Yeah, it's already been amended. It already says.
We're not, yeah, we're not, we didn't include a definition when we amended it. So I think we can ask MAPC to add a reference into this CMR, but that's not what Tom is asking.
No, I understand that. So you, you, your change, Tom, is because the coastal bank doesn't move. It's just, it's, it's a fixed. Is that right?
Is this because it doesn't move or because it's further in?
It's about motion, I think, because the words I want to strike of, strike are the reach. And because, well, it's of the reach of, and I want to change it to just of. So I want to eliminate the reach of. Because water has a reach, but the coastal bank doesn't have a reach. So it's just kind of a cleanup of, of reference for.
You mean, when we, when we crossed out mean high tide, we should have crossed out reach of as long.
Yes, exactly. I'm sorry. I didn't explain that clearly, but.
So the reach up should be crossed out, should be eliminated.
Yeah.
It's been eliminated before, but now you picked it up and you want to, you think it should be eliminated now.
Yeah, cross out the reach of. And then I would make coastal bank plural, coastal banks, because there can be more than one.
Okay, should be plural.
So you understand why I didn't want to do this at the hearing, because it's kind of confusing.
Well, no, but I may, you know, I think we had to do it at a meeting just for this very reason.
Yeah.
A bunch of people and everyone's contributing. So it's.
So I think that's not a substantive change. It's just sort of making.
It's a minor change.
Minor, and it makes more sense going to read it now.
And they'll be, by the way, there's gonna be time to. These kinds of changes like you just suggested, Tom, are, I, I just saw one today when I was going for one of the bylaws with Denise. I said, oh, that shouldn't be there. So, you know, it just, it was one of those things that was just plain wrong and that needed a. That happened.
So are we going to wait till hear what we hear from the public at the public hearings and then make a revised version?
Well, no, I mean, we can revise this stuff right now, but there are things that the public where we might want to revise things. Sure, that's one of the purposes of the public hearing is to.
Okay.
Don't we have to? I thought we had to stick with the stuff that was available to the public whenever that started.
Sorry, what, what do you?
Didn't we make this available already?
Yeah, but you know, a public hearing, members of the public comment on the zoning bylaw, and that comment could result in.
In changes for town meeting?
Yeah, for town meeting, sure. You know, otherwise they're wasting their time, you know.
Right.
Say they don't like this, or they like this, or whatever.
So you'll add whatever they come up with to this.
Oh, no, I won't add it. Whatever they come up with, no.
Well, I mean, we'll have a meeting about it.
I think we'll add things that, as a board, we think are.
Right.
You know, deserve to be added or taken out or whatever.
And the thing that you caught.
Yeah, the thing that I caught was basically it said, the, the building inspector shall prosecute, you know, violators, criminal prosecution. The building inspector has no authority to initiate a criminal prosecution.
No.
That obviously is wrong, you know. And that has to be changed. The district attorney is the one who prosecutes criminal violations, not the building inspector. He can be.
It'll be relieved to hear that.
Right, I know. No, he's not an assistant DA. He can't.
Has our bylaw already said that, or was this change the MAPC did?
No, this is, I don't know if was in the existing one, but it's one of the underlying areas. And with, in fact, MAPC, this could, they could have put in another bylaw which had the same thing. It's, it's wrong. Okay, bylaws that have. And they're, because, like, the bottom line is no one gets criminally prosecuted for the zoning violation. I, I can't. Whenever that has ever happened. So that's why MAPC added the civil violation part of this, where they can be fined. Now, fining is a different story. But being thrown in jail because you have the wrong setback or something? All right, so. Anybody else have anything, item for, item three? They want to discuss, otherwise we'll move to item four. They want to discuss, otherwise we'll move to item four. Everyone go home. Member items, any member items?
I have, I have a few things. I attended the Community Preservation Committee the other day and there were reports out from a few of the ongoing projects, the Firehouse Trust, Millbrook Meadow and the ramp that they're looking at, Atlantic Path. We elected Chair, Vice Chair and Treasurer, pretty much the same people who are in those positions now. I presented on behalf of the Sustainable Housing Working Group a proposal to request money from administrative funds from CPC for us to hire a consultant to establish a community land trust. And that was approved. And the Rockport Art Association deadline for using the funds that they were granted was extended. That was pretty much what happened at that meeting. I just wanted to share that as the liaison.
Okay, well, that's good. So I'm accepting requests for money now, Denise, or is?
Those proposals for actual requests for funds are due on February 7th. The request that I made was the CPC can grant up to $9,950 from their administrative fund for things such as what we requested, which is to pay for a consultant to stand up a community land trust, which is a very common way that municipalities go about establishing affordable housing trusts.
Any other member items?
Yeah, I I just. This this actually addresses what was brought up as a question in public comment period. And this is really directed at you, Denise, but where are we on the housing production plan?
Oh, I forgot. Yeah, I did. I mentioned this to Jason. I did raise that again with a great amount of frustration that that R F P has still not been posted. It's been ready for months. I've been reassured that it will happen. It has not happened as of this morning. So I don't, I don't know what to tell you. It's still not posted. So I've expressed my frustration to the Board of Selectmen and to the person who I emailed it to, who's never responded to my emails. So I'm told this week that it will be posted. Tomorrow's Friday.
So Denise, as as you know, and the rest of the this committee, the members know that I tried to push for grant money for this program and it sort of met the same fate.
Yep.
And so I don't know if that's a coincidence or something else.
I think it's a coincidence. I don't think it's organized obstructionism. I think it's just, you know, one and a half people taking on a lot of things. What I'm told is dealing with COVID, all the lawsuits, all the other things that are going on in town. It's just been difficult to prioritize, so. That's what I'm told.
All right, well, maybe.
Thank you for taking the high road.
You know.
I I feel differently, but, you know.
Yeah.
Right, Tom.
Yep, as usual, we've had another meeting of the Long Beach Options Committee. And we're progressing along, kind of finalizing the information bits that we're gathering for the various options that are being considered. There was a meeting of the selectmen with the Long Beach leaseholders, and I attended that. Quite interesting, they had very large attendance. And I think it was around 100, don't quote me, but large number of people. And a pretty universal opinion that people would like to remain. And most said they would like to buy rather than have to continue leasing if they had that option. Interestingly, only two people mentioned anything about climate change or a threat from flooding. And it was in a context of blaming the Options Committee of having a bias because they thought climate change was going to do something. So that's kind of the level of interaction that that there was with the with the selectmen. So I don't expect a lot of enlightenment to come from them in terms of what the future holds for Long Beach, but it's going to be up to the selectmen.
Well, no, the selectmen will have to put it to the town to vote.
For a sale, they would. They could, they could renew the leases without any town meeting action, as I understand it.
Right.
Are they, is there movement to sell these parcels?
Yeah, I think there is a lot of interest among, if not the selectmen, among other folks around town. I I don't want to ascribe motives, but I I have seen some people that said, this is kind of a pain, let's get rid of it and get a pot of money. No, it's not that simple. So you'll hear more about it. Well, I think we'll have a preliminary report maybe the end of this month or early February.
What was the headline this two weeks ago that the committee is unable to assess the value for the property?
Yeah, we don't have any budget to do an appraisal.
Oh.
So we have an appraisal from 2013.
Which is, which is irrelevant at this point.
Well, it's one of two numbers that we have. We have.
It's meaningless now. 2022, the appraisal in 2013 has no meaning.
Particularly on that piece of land, because either you could argue it's twice what it used to be, like everything else. You could argue it's half because it's going to be underwater in 2010.
And we have the assessed values that we've dug out and added up. And you could say those are useless too, but Bob Physnick told us that those kind of the sort of cycle around the market value. So sometimes they're higher and sometimes they're lower. I did not know that. In any case, we have those two numbers that are things that have been developed, one by an appraiser and one by our town assessors.
You you do, I mean, if the properties are going to be sold, then you're going to have to get, someone's going to have to get appraisals and.
Yeah.
Usually the way that, usually the way these things work, and Harry, you can chime in, is that the the own, the Cs in this case get their own appraisal and the town gets its appraisal. And then assuming the town's appraisal is different, they average the two or something like that and come up with a number, you know.
You've got some very unique variables.
Yeah.
This particular scenario, I can't imagine if these, if these leaseholders wanted to buy their, the land underneath their their homes, you've got to create a homeowners association and you've got to fund a budget to replace that wall. Oh my.
Well, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that's why a single developer option is still up.
Well, none of this is our decision right now.
Thank you. Thank God.
The Long Beach Options Committee is not making any decisions. We're just reporting out what we are able to assemble for the facts, advantages, disadvantages, whatever numbers we can dig up and then present those to town meeting after having a larger hearing with the town. One other thing, the one option we're considering is managed retreat, which was kind of a new concept to people. Although I brought it up in 2018 when they were talking about replacing the seawall back then. It's, it is one of the considered options and it's unfamiliar, so we are actually having a webinar on it next week. And it's an academic who's done a lot of work in this field. It'll be Tuesday evening at 7:00 P. M.
Tom, we're not the only community that's considering such a thing. Was was it New Report or had some other communities factored in or considering managed retreat?
It's not that common in this region. There's been more work done in in the south of the East Coast, like South Carolina, maybe Florida's thinking about it, I think. They're, they're making some progress in that regard on Plum Island. And in Hampton, Hampton Beach, New Hampshire. But in most cases, the the houses are on private property. And that greatly complicates what they have to do. And when we talk to anybody from those like locations, they say we've got it relatively easy because it's on town property.
Right.
So that eliminates one of the barriers. Not that there aren't a whole lot of other barriers, but we'll, we'll learn what we can learn and and try to educate the decision makers, which includes the selectmen and the and the town.
Okay, great. Thank you, Tom. Okay, any other member items? No other member items, public comment. Second public comment period, any members of the public.
I do have Toby with his hand up.
Okay.
Thank you. Am I on?
You are on.
Thank you. Toby Arsenian, 95 Granite Street. Going on from what you were saying about Long Beach. I don't know how it works in New York State, but what Jason Shaw said about selling it doesn't apply here. By state law, if you auction municipal property, it has to go to the highest bidder. And I'm sure there are further stipulations about how you do the auction. In the Long Beach settlement, the Board of Selectmen, on the contrary, promised or not quite promised the cottage owners that they would get right of first refusal. So you're going to graft a dragon's head on top of a turkey or something of that nature. And in order to do what the selectmen have not quite promised.
Toby, stop. We got a report from Tom Mekus about his committee. What you're talking about has nothing to do with the planning board.
It goes on from what what you were saying about selling it. You don't wish to hear it.
Hear what you're saying, but let's, let's, the planning, okay? That's what you're supposed to be talking about. Do you have anything to talk about?
Yes, I do. Yes, I do. And I resent being shut up because I'm certainly not irrelevant. It was something you were speaking of moments ago about planning. Tom's, Tom's, Tom's.
Okay.
Yes, Tom's, yes, if you can stop interrupting me. Tom's concerns about, I assume, the coastal floodplain zoning. Can I have the page number for that?
It's going to be a different page number depending on who printed it out, Toby.
Oh.
The bottom number says 60.
Thank you. And I happen to be the one person who gathered the papers at the at the town clerk's office, and I've written no letters to the Gloucester Daily Times. And I didn't properly follow the discussion on the coastal floodplain because I couldn't find it in the great heap of paper off the cuff. And I can tell you that putting the coastal banks in as a definition for a boundary is problematic because they aren't defined on any map. There's a definition, as Denise found in the 310 Commonwealth of Massachusetts Regulations, but there is no map of those for the whole town, anything like that, as there would be for the FEMA boundaries of coastal floodplains. It's determined on a case by case basis before the Conservation Commission when you go to them for permits. So I don't see how, as a practical matter, you could use it for any sort of a boundary, a standard in a zoning regulation because that would entail the applicant's first going, I can't imagine on what basis to the Conservation Commission to get a determination. It's determined lot by lot. There's no map. Does that make sense?
Does that make sense, Tom?
Okay, and what?
Did you ask a question? Do you want an answer?
Yes, I do.
I would say if if they're in that location, they're going to have to go to the Conservation Commission anyhow.
Right.
They they may or may not. I don't know. I'd have to look at it more carefully. I've been, you know, on about the coastal floodplain regs for, you know, some years and I'm pleased that you're going to do something. I hope you don't move too quickly. And as for what Denise said about the Community Preservation Committee, I spoke against the proposal when it was being presented, was allowed to speak during the course of the meeting and have since written to the Board of Selectmen asking them to look into the legality of the vote because there was no written application and the outfit that's asking for the money has no legal existence. So I've asked them to put that before town council.
Just to, just, just to clarify, I did have a PowerPoint presentation that I shared and that was the written application deemed to be acceptable by the Chair of the Committee. Thank you.
No, thank you.
Any other public comment? No? Okay.
Jason, I saw earlier Laura Fillmore Evans was here, and I think she had a question about any changes to the stormwater. So she maybe, she had, she has left, and I think that's why she thought she might want to ask about that. So I referred her to the the documents that we have on the website.
Stormwater is being worked on by government bylaws.
Well, aren't there some references and and revisions in ours as well in zoning? No. Okay, I thought there were some things that tied into it.
They're, they're doing that. Pro bylaws.
Well, well, what, don't we have a watershed protection as well?
Yeah, but that's not, that's not stormwater.
Okay, so maybe that was the one she was asking about.
Well, she's not here, Tom.
Yeah, I know. I'm just.
Right. Well, there are no other public comments. Motion adjourned.
So I make one more comment I missed earlier. I think our table of contents and the numbering are still out of whack.
Well, I don't know what version you have. We went over it and I think.
The one, the last one that came was dated 110.
All right, well, what do you want us to do about that now, Peter?
Well, it's just the last four, the numbers are one off.
Okay, what's, what's in your copy, what is the?
You get to 10 and it's solar, solar voltaic.
What?
Number, section 10 is solar voltaic.
Yeah, no, let let me just go to the end. What is in enforcement and administration in your version? What is that?
It's 15 in the table of contents.
Okay, do you think it should be something else?
When you go through the page by page, he numbers solar voltaic twice. So you wind up with open space residential being a different number in the, being 12 in the table of contents and 11 in the actual section.
Because I thought, I I recognize that as being a problem and I thought we got rid of that and I just want to make sure that.
Yeah, I thought you fixed it.
Fixed it. Okay, so photo voltaic is.
Is where we go off kilter. Photo voltaic is 10.
It's section 10, okay. And what's section 11 in your version?
My version is solar voltaic again.
No, that's not, then it's, you don't have the latest. Section 11 is open space residential development.
That was fixed, Peter.
What's the date on it?
January 12th.
Okay, last one I got was the 10th.
Yeah, okay, so it's, that's, that's one of the changes that we made. I went through a section, section with Chris Kushel and indeed, yeah, there were like some double section numbers and it totally screwed up the number, but that's all.
Okay, sounds good.
Yes, Jason, it seems like we should all just focus on the ones that are posted on the website now, so that we all have the same basis.
Those are correct.
So motion on the table?
Motion to adjourn on the table.
Second.
Peter, roll call both Denise.
Hi.
Hi. Harry.
Hi.
And. Myself. Myself. Okay.
And you.
A motion passed. Meeting is adjourned. It's 7:23.
Four.
Four.
Thank you. Night, all.
Next meeting will be a good one. All righty. Bye bye.
Next week.
Thank you, Kelsey.